All right, it's time to call the special session to order. Our topics today will be a presentation of the 2020 budget. And then item three will be, we're going to hear just a brief summary of some information concerning the procurement policy from Lacy. And then there will be a discussion of open items and brainstorming, and then adjournment. So, let's get started. Lacy, you're up.
All right. Were you guys able to print out that updated, any of that updated information that I sent yesterday? It was just your corrections, Gary.
My printer is 20 years old. It would still be printing if I tried to reprint them.
Okay. I'll just note them. They were just small, like a formula change and misspelling and things like that. So, I'll just kind of note them as we go through. I want to just go through this packet with you briefly and highlight really the large changes or variances that you're going to see from last year. Really, when you're looking at the general fund, we're very similar to last year. You may see some large variance numbers. For example, if you are on the combined funds summary page, it appears that our revenue for the general fund is $671,000 increased. Really, that is just a change in accounting for how we account for the general fund transfer from water, sewer, and sanitation. In prior years, we showed that as a negative expense item, and I believe that the proper way to show it is revenue to the general fund and expense in the other funds. So, that is truly what makes up that difference. We're not actually projecting an increase of $600,000, $700,000 in the general fund. And likewise, what you see on the expenditures is from that number as well. Any questions on that, or does that make sense? Good? Okay.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. If you flip to the summary page that shows the mill rate and mill levy information, this really just shows that we are keeping, the budget as proposed keeps the mill levy at the same amount, which is $2,599,539. There was a decrease in assessed valuation, so of course, that does drive the mill rate up, but the total levy dollars remains the same. And below that, you see what that kind of means to the taxpayers. This page, as well as the next page, shows just some examples. You can go in and plug in, for example, the value of your home, and it will show based on the 2020 proposed mill rate, what your tax levy dollars, the dollar amount of that that would go to the city. Any questions?
I have none.
Now, the way this formula is set up, it shows that there would be, on a hundred, the assessed value of a $100,000 home, it would be an increase that would amount to $12.16.
No, so I should explain that. This bottom part, I just wanted to show you guys, if you were to raise the levy, not the rate, but the levy, $50,000, that would mean for a value $100,000 home valuation, that would be a $12.16 increase to the taxpayer. But that is if we raise the levy above and beyond what is proposed, by $50,000.
To make up for the difference between the assessed valuation dollars dropping for 2020, even though we're staying at the same dollar amount as far as expenditures, that would basically be, if I remember right, you indicated to me about a $26,000.
It's a little over half a mil, which comes out to about $26,000, $27,000. So, it's not a huge difference. And on here, it shows the change in valuation, it went down about 1.03%.
Okay.
But the people will see a change in their property tax because of the valuation change.
You would see a roughly $6 dollar increase, maybe? It depends. You're raising the same levy dollars, so no, you shouldn't. But it depends on what your house, if it went up or down. So, there will be a change, but...
Right, that's what I want. A lot of people will say, "Well, the rate's the same, but my taxes went up," because all this has to tie back to the evaluation that the appraiser has set on your house. So, some people, if their property decreased in value, will see a reduction in the property tax. But if the appraiser raises the value of their house, then they're going to pay an increase. But basically, we as a city is keeping our expense the same.
Correct, yes.
So, there is going to be fluctuation, and that's all tied to the valuation of their property.
Correct, yes.
If I remember right, last year, Leonard, I think, wasn't that amount, didn't it figure out to be $16,000 when it was all said and done?
Yeah, it seems like it.
Yeah, I'm almost sure that was right, I'm just going from memory, but...
That does sound right.
I'd bet a lot of money on that dollar figure. Not that I'm a betting man, but...
The thing that we have to deal with is how much money we're spending, and we're not increasing the amount that we're going to spend. We're holding that constant.
Correct.
But people will see variations because of the method of basically the end result of a mill or mill levy, bases on the difference between revenue and expenses. And that's what the adjustment is, and it's going to depend upon everyone's individual property valuation.
Yes.
So, I guess what I'm trying to make clear, that there's no way that we can guarantee everyone will not see a raise in their property tax.
Absolutely.
That comes from the actual appraisal value.
Yes, yep.
Now, we're trying to maintain our spending, but the end result to them is going to depend upon the valuation of their property.
Yes, I think that's a very important designation, yes. Okay. We'll flip back to the general fund. I mean, I can go over this in however much detail you all prefer, but we've really hit the highlights. There's really no large change or significant change to the general fund expenditures. Some items that I think are important to note, within the general fund, we are funding some external organizations, which include Main Street. They requested $25,000, which is a $5,000 increase from last year. This budget that you have in front of you has accepted that and shown the $25,000 support to Main Street. The historic museum has, for as long as I could see back, received about $17,000 in support, and that is in here. Same with AWOL, $30,000 support, and the Riverside Aquatic Center, $15,000. Those are all the same from prior years, no change.
What page are you on?
That line item detail, that granular detail, is not in this report necessarily, except for it is in the, if you're looking at the general fund, that first summary page, it's within the general government line item.
In the past, we've had a lot more detail on the presentation, and it really helps understanding that, and is looking at the procurement and appropriations going forward. It really helps, for me anyway, I don't know about the other two commissioners, to have that breakdown. I think, you know, the 2019 did, and in the past, we had the three-ring notebook, and it really was beneficial for me to understand where we are. Because then if somebody comes up later and says, "Well, how much is a city funding for Chamber?" Then it gives me a place to go back and look, and I don't have to call, or, "Well, how much is Main Street getting?" We've got the information that we can look up.
And I agree. I think those types of items are very important to see on a line-by-line detail, and I apologize for not including that in here. I can very easily pull that. But the reason I didn't do the line-by-line detail is it, I think it puts you more in the weeds than you want to be or need to be, because we could budget $5,000 for gas in whatever fund. Gas prices go up, we have to pay $10,000. That line-by-line detail isn't necessarily what we're held to under state statute. I mean, we can spend the $10,000 on gas, but that means that we've got to cut back $5,000 on some other line item. So, I think that, I don't think it's important to get lost in those details. Now, the numbers that are more hard numbers, like funding to external organizations, yes, I think that having that information disposable and at your fingertips anytime someone asks you is important, and I'd be happy to get you that. I just, I worry about giving you too much overload of information when, you know, that line-by-line detail, we're not exactly held to. We're looking at overall spending limits within our budget authority.
But we've handled the overloaded information before, and it really hasn't been a problem. For me, you know, it's always better to have more information than what you need, so... And I know this is your first budget prep in our first meeting, and, you know, one of the things that we've talked in the past is having more preliminary meetings. You know, you've had a lot to absorb in a very short period of time. And I guess I feel, if we're responsible for the budget, then we kind of look what we want, and, you know, don't be afraid to overload us. There is a point that the overload can become redundant, but that line-by-line expense, it really, I know it helps me feel more comfortable than just looking at bottom line. I don't know how the other two commissioners feel, but the past, you know, we had all the information, and Tony and Jen did a more detailed presentation with the notebook, and then Mike started reducing the information, and it became a little more difficult to see where we were getting to the end. But I don't know how Gary and Louis feel.
I don't think too much information is a problem. We're looking at documents and contracts and everything involved continually that are pretty lengthy, so I don't see that. I mean, I don't think that's an overload. It's just sometimes, if it's available, then we have a chance to go through and look at it.
Available, and I don't mind providing it. I will ask, don't scrutinize the account names necessarily. I discovered through this process that we need a complete overhaul of our account system, our general ledger system, to where we have a more detailed and thoughtful setup of it. You know, we may have, we may have an account in, I don't know, general government, just as an example, that says medical and vet. We, I mean, why in the world would you have vet in general government? But that account is really used for, you know, like the medical of it, for like drug testing or something like that. And so, I, those types of things drive me crazy. And that's part of why I didn't print it out and give it, because there are so many cleanup items that I want to do. So, as long as you guys know that, don't hold me to those account names.
This is the third budget system we've looked at, so, you know, it's hard to come in and you guess what we've looked at, how we feel comfortable looking at it, and us looking at different formats too, from various financial directors. It's, yeah, understandable, just each person's going to record those lines different, and the longer you do it, the more we'll get familiar with that and kind of understand. Sometimes when you have it, you can kind of track what was intended. But it really helps understanding how we got to the end and what's going on, and I guess it makes us feel too a part of the process, that, you know, we're not just looking at two numbers, and how much is coming in and how much is going out, and as we tie to procurement policy and things together, it's easier to track. And, you know, well, for example, in the Economic Development Fund, when you have a line-by-line, I would think that there is somewhere there's a carryover, or that Central Business District grant money, that that's where we're coming out of, would show up.
No, it wouldn't. So, and you do have line-by-line detail of those, like special purpose funds that only have capital expenditures in. So, that is shown in here in detail on the capital expenditure summary page. But it's not going to show, you know, leftover money from prior years, or encumbrances, or anything like that. That's not going to show in the budget.
Then if you create a fund for it, it would, a separate fund, in the treasures report?
It would, so it would show as a balance in the treasures report, so long as you, you know, transferred, you know, if you were going to fund it a certain way, yes, you'd have like that cash balance sitting there. But just looking at it as a, from a budgeting perspective, you're not going to see that in the line-by-line detail.
I guess that's some things we need to discuss, how we can track different things.
Yep.
I have a question, because you had also mentioned, or someone had mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce amount of funding, but basically, the only contribution we make as far as dollars to the Chamber, isn't that the membership fee of $2,500? Would that be correct?
That one I'll have to, I don't want to tell you the wrong thing, but I, let me look, and I can get back to you.
Okay.
Are there any other general questions on the general fund, or do you want to wait until I can send out more detail? What's your preference?
I think if you just go ahead and present the questions and come back, I'm assuming this isn't our only review of it, that...
No, we can meet however many times you want.
Kind of give us a highlight, and then we can come back and revisit and...
Okay. I'd like to skip back to the capital portions then. And I apologize, the next version you receive will have page numbers. This drives me crazy. Okay. Got it? Thanks.
Got your binoculars?
Okay. So, this spreadsheet gives you an overall look of the total capital expenditures that we're looking at this year. And when putting together the capital budget, I really had our strategic plan in mind, you know, the community-based strategic plan really outlined that we needed to start taking better care of our streets and looking at economic development, things like that. And so, I really kept that in mind when going through the capital expenditures. If you look just kind of at the top, I do have a column for grant, which I don't think we've had in the past. You know, that's not money coming out of our pocket. We're really, we've got the match, whatever percentage it is from the grant. But I think it's important to show the public that we're getting that grant funding, and, you know, the overall cost of a street project, even though it may only show $200,000 that the city is putting into that street, you know, really, we've gone out and got a grant for $800,000. And so, I think that's an important thing to show. And so, I did include it here for the fuel system and South Apron Grant at the airport, as well as some FEMA grants that I'm going to apply for and hopefully get. So, they're not locked down and awarded yet, but I have included them in there just for comparison purposes.
So, are the figures you showed in the grant confirmed that we've received, or they projected, or...
The airport, under airport, the South Apron Grant and the fuel system grant are awarded.
Okay. Then...
The match for the, under special improvements, there's a flood buyout and flood buyout demolition. And then below in streets, there's a North Park Cottonwood to Parkhurst. Those are anticipated, but not awarded.
Could you put an asterisk or something to denote that they're pending or something?
Okay, that was the flood buyout FEMA and the flood buyout demolition FEMA?
Yes.
And was there one more?
And then below on the North Park Cottonwood to Parkhurst.
Okay. Pending.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to ask questions, please, right now?
Absolutely, yes.
It was in the, it kind of carries over from my question yesterday, and water distribution and sanitation as a capital outlay. We've got like the, what, $500,000 automated meter, some water line repair and all, but with the, with the problems we have with the flooding, do we look at reevaluating this to address some of our problems there? Or how set in stone do these capital projects become then?
So, there is, if you flip back to the back page, there's a walled lift station mitigation...
I saw that.
Line item?
Yeah.
So, that does, that as well as the high service mitigation, I believe, account for what you're talking about. I need to look in here and see possibly some of that should really be in the grant column.
The $15,000 and the $75,000?
It would be the 45 and the 75.
What about the 15 is...
The 15 and the 25 would be the city's portion of it. So, I am anticipating being able to do those, you know. I try to be very aware of what I was budgeting in terms of non-awarded grants. You know, I think that we've got a lot that we can apply for, and I'm very busy writing grant proposals. But I think what I've got in the budget will cover us as far as what realistically we would be awarded.
And the, dealing with the pump situation at water distribution and the height of the levy at sewage treatment, will we look at that as a budget project for 2021?
The pump, you're talking about walled lift station?
No, at the water treatment plant, where we, you know, with the last flood, we were concerned about losing the pumps and correction of that.
So, that would be the high service mitigation, that's in there.
Let's see.
What I have in here now is walled lift station mitigation, and then the water treatment plant mitigation. The water, the sewer plant, I don't think that it's reasonable, I don't think FEMA will pay to have a levy dug around the whole plant. I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but that was talked about last time we went through this?
It was talked about in 07, '08, but, I mean, we didn't run a flexible again.
Well, I mean, not with, you know, we can try with FEMA, but it's still the problem that it floods and it's going to cost us money. So, if we don't get the money from FEMA, we still really need to address that, so we're not out, you know...
That's something we need to look at. If they won't fund it, then we need to figure out a way.
On that one, I thought we kind of did a cost-benefit analysis in '07, and the cost of doing that was greater than the reasonable risk to the...
FEMA said yes.
Okay.
But it's something we need to readdress and look at, and go through, actually put a number to the project and see what it costs to do.
Right, because once, when the plant's out, we just dump raw sewage in the river, don't we?
Yeah, if the plant gets taken out, then everything is going to go straight in the river.
And until the repairs are completed, so if it's six months, 18 months, we're not processing any sewage, it just goes into the river.
Right.
So...
Be a good thing to avoid.
Yeah, you know, it's hard to say, particularly if you live downriver.
Yeah.
And then we start getting in, then the longer we wait, then EPA gets involved, and it's a mandatory deal.
Yeah, it puts us in a situation, a bad situation.
Yeah, grants are good, but, you know, I think we need to...
So, we have, from the utility fund, I mean, everything around our utilities are, you know, are expensive. So, we do have budgeted in here a $500,000 transfer to a water or utility project reserve. So, items like that would be able to be funded through that reserve fund, basically a savings for large, large, large projects like this.
Yeah, and it probably could be a million.
Could be 2 million, I mean...
That's what, until we know.
Yeah.
It does seem like it's worth investigating a little further, at least. I mean, we just barely dodged a bullet this last time around, and the price we pay is so high.
So, are you okay with us spending the money with an engineer to get a preliminary estimate of that cost?
Basically a savings for large, large, large projects like this.
Yeah, and it probably could be a million.
Could be two million, I mean.
That's what, until we know.
It does seem like it's worth investigating a little further, at least. I mean, we just barely dodged a bullet this last time around.
Yeah.
The price we pay is so high.
So are you okay with us spending the money with an engineer to get a preliminary estimate of that cost?
We'll go back and see what was done in 2007 and get the information together and see. You're sounding like there's some numbers out there that have been ran and somebody made the decision that it wasn't cost-effective. But, you know, I guess at that point, we're looking at it's a 500-year flood and it's years from happening again. And now we're finding out within 12 years, water was knocking on the door. So, you know, I would say first, go back and get the figures because then by cost of living, you know, you can interpolate the numbers up to get an accurate figure or close enough to see where we are. I don't think we actually need to hire an engineer yet, but see what information we already have. And...
I think FEMA did the analysis, so, I mean, it's right at the mercy of FEMA and what they'll give us. So, but it's, we can always ask. And we can always, again, submit it this year and see if they'll do the updated analysis and then ask them for it.
But they should have, there should be a number somewhere from FEMA instead of, to make that determination. I would think maybe, you know, a letter that that data would have been transferred back to us. But I would do research first and, you know, one way, you know, if you know the size of the levee and you know how high you need to raise it, is call some dirt companies and say, hey, I need to raise a levee three feet, compact it, and it's, you know, this wide, this many lineal feet. They'll do the cubic yards and give you a rough guesstimate that'll be good enough to know the direction. So I don't think, you know, for this, I don't really see it being an engineering task other than bringing, hauling dirt, compacting it and, you know, fine-grating seating and probably some gravel and compaction for a road to cross it. But, you know, I think with our own staff, we could save. Most engineering studies start at $10,000, $15,000 and up from there. That this isn't really, for what we're talking at this point, a budget. See what you've got and the numbers could come up pretty good.
Yeah, I think we were all three in agreement. And I'm sure Terry would agree also that this looks like it's going to be something that's going to be more of a common occurrence as far as flooding. So we need to, I think we're all in agreement, we need to find some economical ways to protect our assets, whether at the walled station or at the water plant or at the wastewater plant. I don't want to get into position to where we lose the wastewater treatment plant and we're dumping sewage back in. I think last time it was a year and a half before that came back online and the repairs were made. So, you know, there's nothing you can do at that point. But we have such a high-dollar investment in all of that that it'd be wise to find ways to come up with some solutions that would give us some added protection because that next flood, it could be 10 or 12 years down the road, it could be next year. And this looks like it's just going to be something we're going to be dealing with on a regular basis for quite a while, so.
And I can give a much more in-detail presentation and update you on the, you know, all of our ideas of what we've thought of to bring to FEMA and the different grants that we want to apply for. You know, that, we're still in the preliminary phases. So when preparing the budget, I try to be cognizant of that and put in enough so that we're not, you know, we've got some room to work with, but the FEMA and things like that is not written in stone. We could not get that one or get a different one. I just tried to put enough in here to be competitive and to be forward-thinking.
I like that addition, that it shows some direction. And then you're also providing a budget item for our match. That, you know, if we're looking at a Clink project or a KDOT project and it's got matching funds, where you highlight the application that we're anticipating a grant, but you're already looking ahead, that we're going to have to pay our part.
Right.
And it's included in the budget and here's where it's coming from.
Right.
You know, I really like, I like what you did there, that it really helps. And, you know, and even at our discussion about this, it really shows forethought into where we want to end up and coming back trying to use our money efficiently and wisely. On, on the water distribution, kind of carryover, maybe a gap. We had $300,000 water line projects, I think budgeted for 2019, and we've got $100,000 here. Are we still going to do the $300,000 water line replacement this year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been designed, right? Working on the design of it and getting laid out. We'll get it bid out.
Is it, do we have an engineer doing it or are you? Is it something that you know the length and that can be done in-house and just?
Right now, I'm doing the layout of it and basic design. I'm just going to see what permits is to be charged, just to draw it.
Okay.
Set of plans, the bid or bid specs.
Okay.
See what they're going to charge to do that.
Okay. Okay, because, you know, looking at this without consideration that the 300,000 water line replacement's going to take place, I would question if we eliminated the 300,000 and again, we reduce the automated meter readers so we can start addressing our water line leak issues. But, so we're going to end up in two years, spending $400,000 on water line upgrades and then transition into the automated readers for 500,000.
My thought process on this is, we also have GIS and asset management budgeted a project for 100,000. It's under the Water Sewer Admin. My thought process behind that is, I think it would be beneficial for us to lay the groundwork and get an idea of where everything, you know, an inventory of our systems, to really be able to effectively target what areas we replace and when, rather than just, you know, we've got, we've had five calls to this water leak over here and only two to this one. But really, if we've got an inventory of our assets, of our lines, it may come out that we really need to fix the one that's only had two leaks first, rather than that one. So I think that there's a lot of knowledge that's just in Terry's head that I'd like to see in GIS and come out of that project. And so when putting this together, my thought process was, let's put more to the automated meter readings this year. I think that, you know, that also, the readers will address the customers', you know, water leaks and billing issues. I think that they will see a significant increase in the level of service by going to the readers. And so while we're working on the project on the back end, I thought, let's put more to the readers this year. Next year, we would flip-flop, less on the readers, more on the line replacement. It was just how I designed this. I mean, we could do three and three or two and six.
I see the logic in what you're doing. And the thing that I've noticed too, it's the turnover rate you have in your meter readers, it's hard to understand when you see two guys walking down the street reading a water meter or you see one in a pickup truck following the other one, reading a meter. So the automated, with the turnover that you have, the automated meter reading system is going to save us money in the long run. And you've got to know, you've got to document all your upgrades continually. Like you're saying, with your system, you've got to have that capability to identify them. And at some point, you're going to have to get that information out of Terry's head while he's here before he goes. And, you know, yeah. So I see what you're doing with that and that's good. It'd be nice to look at with that, whether we can justify a CAT operator or somebody to operate the GSI other than, you know, Kelly has so much other stuff to do than to get that in. Because it's so critical to have that information available. And, you know, the systems now, you could take your tablet or your laptop right out in the vehicle on site and gather that data and make reports, so. But getting it entered into our system is so important, whether, you know, we could partner with the county dad staff or we have staff. When we go out to consultants and we're looking at 150 to 200 an hour, it reduces our outcome. But I see where you're going, that, yeah, let's, we're doing good. This 400,000 in two years for water line replacement is a big, a big jump forward. And the automated meter reading is going to help reduce expense of continually training help. And, you know, you've got to get the information put to be able to retrieve, so.
What was the total cost for the integration of the AMR for a water meter? In totally, roughly, anyone remember?
One and a half to two million?
Was that...
My estimation was $2 million.
Okay.
Numbers have changed since then. Actually, some of the positive AMR in my system have come down.
Down.
More and more of them they've put in. So the costs are actually coming down, which is surprising.
We'd have an estimated half of it, you know, that's pretty good.
You know, some of the commercial and central business districts, the meters are with, inside the building or in the basement, so that'll really, really aid in time to gather the data for billing. And, you know, there's potential chance of injury now with the manhole covers and critters living in them.
It's also customer service also.
Right.
Someone has a leak, they will know. They turn a meter on and there's a leak, that's going to notify you. So I think customer service, I think the people will like it.
Yeah. I've never heard of anyone that's gone to the system regret that they had a state. And it's going to be a big improvement for the city.
We have a pretty good chunk in here for our ADA consultant we haven't really talked about. I know that we said at one point, we would investigate hiring an ADA consultant, but I hadn't anticipated $150,000. So I'd love to discuss that.
David, do you want to kind of give an update?
Lacey and I put a number there, but that isn't necessarily the number. Lacey, Kelly and I met with Belinda Benjer, Benjer, is that how it goes?
I think so.
On July 8th. And she's going to be coming back in August. We provided her with a lot of information and documents for her to look at. Interesting, number one, we have several active complaints at the DOJ right now. I'm aware of it. DOJ is watching, they're aware of what we're doing. The state ADA director and I have been speaking about this. So she's going to come back and spend a couple of days with us and she wants to meet with you guys individually. Because our number one goal is, we do not want another investigation. If we get another settlement agreement, that's 20% of your budget has to be put to it. That is what the average is for another settlement. And we are this close.
Well, I'm going to ask you to back up a little, Dave.
Okay.
When Leonard brought this up, saying, you can't be an expert in everything, all the hats you wear, so let's bring in a consultant.
Right.
We sent out an RFP.
Yes.
And we got, how many?
We received 10, about 10, that we sat, reviewed. This is the number one pick through all of our reviews, Lacey, Craig and I.
Was a pick made on credentials, qualifications, or did they submit a price at the time or?
Both, all. They did submit a price.
All things.
And we did, you know, we cast a wide net. So we said the full package, tell us what it would be. And, you know, we, I'd say the upward was, what, 450 or something like that? So then from there, we were able to narrow...
Get it from Terry Liebarger, he's got money in him.
Yeah, that's right.
Narrow the scope down and...
This is a tough issue.
Yeah, no kidding.
Because there is a lot of gray areas. And that was, I think, what Lacey and I found, and Kelly was there when we sat and talked to Belinda. Because there is a lot of gray areas, overturned interpretation.
Yep.
And they bring the expertise, the attorneys. And, you know, those gray areas, a lot of those have been answered through case law. There are lawsuits ongoing every day and that is how the DOJ makes their decisions and that. And that's why she has taken all of our information back, they're studying it. And they're going to come back, visit with you guys individually, and then come and bring a proposal of what they feel, working with you guys, what we need to do to, one, stop what, so that we don't get another settlement agreement, and move us forward. And, you know, I had somebody tell me, this is a 10-year project. And she kind of laughed at us, didn't she, Lacey? You know, this is a process that's ongoing forever. I think Leonard will agree with that. ADA is going to be here forever. You're continually monitoring, fixing things, and the cost of it, you know, it's just going to be small bits and pieces. And I think that's what she is going to work with you guys, say, this is what I think where we need to start to ultimately work to get a transition plan, and this may be phase one. And work with you guys, I mean, it's your decision. We feel we're bringing you the best person, company that can provide this service to give us the direction we need to get us moving forward and take care of the things.
So for our $150,000, do we get a master plan for the whole city?
Well, I think that's where she's going to come back and talk to you guys. Because, I mean, what she determines is the first phase, you know, it may only be 50,000 or 60,000 to get us down the road to where we need to go. She may as well take what I put together and help us there, but also go in another direction and show you guys. I mean, she's looking at the current transition plan, what the stuff that I did, all of the studies that Trans Systems did. They're looking at all of that. We have 17 complaints that need to be addressed. They're looking at that, how we can address those complaints. And then coming back, but she needs to visit with you guys individually. I mean, you are the representation of the city. You guys are going to help her formulate what we need to get us down the road, to keep DOJ satisfied, help our community. We've got to get, you guys have to form a committee of the disabled community. That is a vital part of ADA. They help us pick the projects that need to be addressed. They kind of help set that, that's clearly defined in the ADA law. That committee has to work with us to help pick the projects that need to be addressed. So she's, those are all pieces that she's going to help us bring together. And I think you guys will be able to work out. We just put a figure there. We just put a figure there. Uh, I'm not saying a hundred and fifty is gonna go to, towards her. A portion of that will be whatever you guys work out with her. If you agree, that's who you wanna work with. And then the rest, Lacey and I can put towards that project that you guys determine is your priority moving forward. And there's just a, she just needs to visit with you. I know specifically, she'd like to visit with Leonard, the downtown, and how to incorporate all those things. And so, I think you'll be very impressed by her. I, I know Lacey and I was, and Kelly.
I know it's sticker shock. I mean, I did the same thing. Um, but she, she's very impressive and, you know, I, I bought in. I, I'm on board with it. I, I think it will put us in a good position.
I had asked for the RFP to look at. And I, we never got, did you get it? We never got it.
Yeah, I'll get it. I mean, I'll get it.
And at that time, it sounds like you've hired one.
No, we have not. We have just talked to her. This is all, you guys do that.
You just plug this figure into the budget so we can get something.
Plug it in. But this is gonna be an ongoing service. You guys may work out an initial, if this is who you agree to. I'm not saying this is after you guys visit with her. You may tell us, "Go back to the drawing board or go back to your others and bring us another one." You know, this is phase one. I think there'll be a phase two and three. We also have the issue of currently ADA is funded through the sales tax. I would assume, and I'm not assuming anything, you guys will do that initiative, and eight, there'll be some sort of sales tax to help ADA going forward because it is a long-term project throughout the community, addressing all the ADA needs eventually. So, going forward, I mean, there'll be other phases of this consultant as she helps us get to where we need to be. And a big part of this, and I really thank Leonard for meeting with Lacey and I, because he helped show us, and that's kinda what directed us, and when we went out to look for a consultant, of the GIS aspect of it and the, all the pictures and the drawings. Because as you said earlier with Terry, we're all going, getting older. You know, we're not gonna be here in five, ten years. We will retire, the new younger generation comes in. They need that information. We carry a lot of information in our heads and stuff. And, you know, Leonard showed us that. And I, I appreciate that, Leonard. I think Lacey and I took a lot away from that meeting and learned a lot of what you've done and some of the consulting work you've done.
Well, I think some of this, it's getting a little lost. You know, I've never seen in the ADA that we need to form a citizens committee to make decisions on what needs to be done.
They help guide. They're supposed to be, you're supposed to reach out to the disabled community, and there's a committee that helps you, uh, make decisions.
That was done initially in the settlement agreement.
Right.
But now, we're beyond that, and we're addressing issues that, uh, come up. And some of the complaints, just because we have a complaint doesn't mean it's a justifiable.
Well, I, I understand it. I understand.
One that we're forced to correct, and so.
But she has extra piece to answer these questions.
The problem seems simpler, that we've got issues to identify in our buildings that have already been addressed. We've got streets that still haven't been addressed, and, you know, I think that's where our ADA has got out of hand, where we've done ramps that weren't required. We've done types of ramps that weren't required. We spent thousands of dollars in that. And now, we need to come back and, and look at, at what direction to go. And we're, we're still kinda running wild. We don't know what we've had accomplished yet, and, you know, if we had the RFQ to look at what was sent out, then we'd be better looking at a hundred and fifty thousand. But, you know, where she's taking information back to look at how it applies, that sounds like we're obligated to a fee. Uh, you know, we're crossing the line of.
And if you looked at the RFQ right now, the, the RFQ, the, the numbers that came back from that were four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I mean, and it's.
We don't know what that is basically. We don't know what was asked for, if it is even relevant to what we need.
Complete from zero to a complete finished transition plan is, I mean, basically, everything.
Yes, inventory of all of our policies, procedures, website, buildings, sidewalks, streets.
Yes, that is a, that would be a total if you just said, "Do it," four hundred and fifty. But we have a lot of that stuff.
I know, that's why.
Yes.
We don't need to re-audit the buildings that were corrected in the ADA.
That's.
And there was a list.
That's why, even though that was all included, that's why that discussion comes back with you guys, and the visit, and where we need to go, and what all needs to be put together. Am I saying that right, Lacey?
Yes, and I, I think another important thing that at least I got out of my conversations, um, with Belinda and this company, is that they have the expertise and, and knowledge when they come in, and they give us basically an inventory of whatever, you know, whatever we need. If we, if we want her to go and look at our sidewalks and, and show, you know, when and, and where ADA improvements would need to be made, so that we could say, you know, if we got a complaint on whatever corner, we can go to her plan and pull up that location and see exactly how far it's out of compliance, the, the estimated cost to fix that, and as well as, you know, if it's, if it's not in compliance, but we're not necessarily obligated to fix it, it will also give some, some case law or suggestions on, you may not be obligated to fix it, but case law shows that many cities have been sued over this and lost, although the, the ADA doesn't necessarily, in black and white writing, say that you have to. It's been proved in court that, that the courts side with the complaint. And so, it, it gives us that additional knowledge to, to weigh the pros and cons of fixing a spot. I mean, it may not say absolutely this falls within, um, the guidelines and, and you have to fix it. But if not, there may be a, a great reason of why we should. And I think that this, this would also help with that, and it, it would lower our risk factor.
So, I'm sorry for interrupting, but, so, we started the process of selecting a consultant, as far as sending out an RFP. And now we're putting the budget together. We haven't made the decision what consultant, if any, we wanna work with, so we're just putting a placeholder in here.
Yes.
Of a hundred and fifty thousand, although we got proposals as high as four hundred and fifty thousand. So, this is all still to be determined. If we put it in the budget, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand. It's a placeholder.
You guys may meet with her, after you guys meet with her, and she gives her, hopefully, we're gonna set this up in late August. We wouldn't get past budget and all that.
Of course.
She'd come in, meet with you guys. We do it on a commission. We, and ultimately give you a proposal on a Thursday night that could be considered.
Right. And if we don't like your first choice, we might wanna talk to somebody else.
Throw it out and say, "Start over," or narrow, you may be, you may like her, and just narrow the scope of what you want her to do that helps, gives us a plan moving forward.
Okay.
But I think you'll be very impressed with her, a wealth of knowledge. I was just.
I'm happy about being impressed with her. I just was stunned by the dollar amount. I was thinking, when Leonard first, I was thinking it'd be a much lower number.
I was very shocked.
Those damn consultants.
What I figured was, is, you know, we would have a consultant to call, that we've done so much. We've been here almost ten years working ADA, and we keep reinventing the wheel every time, that, you know, if, if the street is brand new, the intersections have to comply with ADA. If it's milled and overlaid, it has to comply where the street touches the sidewalk. It has to comply. But you, you can file a complaint on a street that hasn't been touched since, uh, nineteen sixty, but we're not mandated to fix it because we haven't been out of compliant, because we put, haven't put new asphalt down. It's that simple. So, if somebody files, we don't need to audit the whole town. All we have to do is look at the ones that have been completed since ninety-two and make sure they comply. And there was work done two thousand and ten or so, when Mike Conway, he went through and, and noted those. So, you know, it's, it, it's not as broad as what the consultant is saying. And that's where, you know, I get concerned with, we've had consultants that didn't take us the direction we needed to go. We went way beyond.
I think that's why she wants to visit with you, and I, because those are exactly questions that we asked. Leonard, I'm being, I, I think Lacey will, we ask those type of questions. And if you guys do reach agreement, she is available for that type of thing, to ask, answer those questions for us. So, by no means am I anywhere near an expert. You know, you and I visited yesterday about two complaints I've received just in the last week, that I'm kinda baffled about. And, I mean, it is difficult when you deal with it, uh, with these complaints, because, you know, they're serious complaints when you have people in wheelchairs and other things that come with these concerns. And there could be serious consequences if they, if we end up in a court with them. So, I mean, I mean, and, you know.
Yeah, but because we got the money, doesn't mean that we, it justifies into our responsibility to.
And those were questions, and I think Lacey explained it, that we asked her, and.
I did. I mean, that was one of my concerns, and, and you know, something that she said to me is two things, really. If, if you are not necessarily required to fix it, however, I can provide pages and pages and pages of case law showing that the courts tend to side with saying that you do. Wouldn't you rather know that and, and spend the ten thousand dollars to fix it than not fix that complaint and be sued? So, and, and likely lose based on case law. Um, so I, I think that is one thing that was very important to me, because I, you know, I'm with you. I, I don't wanna just fix every, everything and, and fix things that we don't have to. I want to be able to look at it and, and weigh the pros and cons in a, a cost benefit or risk analysis, you know, of, of where we should and should not fix things. Um, so I hadn't really thought of, of that risk component of, you know, yeah, we may not be mandated to fix it, but if we don't, where does that put us on a, on a risk scale? Um, and I'd like to cover all of our bases and, and not leave us in a vulnerable position.
Here's a prime example. I have a complaint from a disabled community that we do not have accessible access to Labette Health. That's a very gray area. There is not sidewalks or accessibility to Labette Health for somebody in a motorized wheelchair or does not have the means of travel to get to that facility other than walk down Peter Pan Road.
But the ADA doesn't require us to provide access.
But when we ask that question to her, there is in the ADA.
Because she gets a job for it.
Well, I'm just, there are certain things in the community. But I'm, I'm just telling you, that's how great it is.
Are they speaking, are they going contrary to what the regulations that they've already established?
No, because DOJ follows case law.
Well, I understand that, but it almost seems like here we're setting precedent for this being established, but then we're also gonna go back and we're gonna deviate from that where we see fit. So, it's just like you want it both, like you want it both ways.
We're not required to provide accessibility to every point in town. We're to provide accessibility to our facilities. But that doesn't mean from my house, you've gotta provide an accessible route to Labette Health or to this building. You.
I agree, Leonard. I'm just giving you an example of a complaint that I've received.
Yeah, but I'm seeing if the consultant that we're talking about hiring says, "Well, there could be a case that because I can't get to Labette Health on a accessible route from where I live, that I can sue you." Then there's no end to this project. What we might as well do is just start in one corner and start redoing the whole town. And that's, that's not what the ADA says. You know, it's, it's that clear. And that's what, you know, we've chased the ADA rabbit for ten years. I'm ready to shoot the sucker.
Oh, I understand.
Let's have barbecue.
Can I say something?
I'll bring the salad.
You guys are sitting, city commissioners. It's inconsistent to want an ADA consultant if you're reaching conclusions like you are right now. You should let your consultant reach the conclusions based upon the scope of the work you define, like, you might tell the consultant, "Just tell us what we're required to do." That's category one. Category two might be at the, at the risk areas, which are gray. And then you can decide case by case if you need to do them. I'd say let your consultant do it. I think it's dangerous in the ADA to try and make these conclusions on your own, because Leonard, you've been on the city commission that approved phase one, phase two, phase three, and you approved all those ramps. Now you're saying we shouldn't. See, that's how confusing it is.
Yeah. And, and I didn't, I trusted the consultant until the ramp came up at Gary's. I called DOJ and I said, "Hey, you know, explain to me." And that's where, you know, through his conversation, we got into some of the other areas. But I know we're way off track, but I'm. Gary, you brought it up. It's your fault.
I accept full responsibility.
Yeah.
Sean Wallace made me do it, though. It's totally his fault.
So, we're not stuck with, basically, we can jump back to we're not stuck at the one fifty. It's just kinda.
It's just in there, again, forward, forward thinking. It's cushion. Um, while we're on the topic of ADA, let's go through the other ADA numbers in here. Um, you'll see that there is a column for Fund Seventy Four ADA. That is, um, Fund Seventy Four is where the, I, forgive me, I can't remember which year it is, but it's where the bond proceeds for the ADA bond. I, I wanna say twenty sixteen?
What's that now?
Twenty sixteen were the ADA bonds. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Um, so there are, that was to address transition plan and complaints and things like that. Um, there is excess funds. I believe it's about two hundred and seventy thousand that is remaining in those bond proceeds. Um, through my talks with the auditors and Gilmore and Bell, um, we, that money is just sitting there. We need to start using it for its intended purpose. And so, you will see that I've got, like, the ADA complaint, sixty-five thousand dollars coming out of Fund Seventy Four. Um, the annual ADA project, which it really needs to be tied to, you know, existing structures. It, it wouldn't be like a, we're, we've got a new street. Um, you know, the ADA for that new street would not want, we would not want that to come out of Fund Seventy Four. Um, but any complaint-based or, um, basically existing type items, I, I have budgeted coming out of Fund Seventy Four, which, um, is an unbudgeted account or fund. So, but just, you know, for comparison purposes, I've put it on here so you can see, you know, that's maybe not coming out of specially used sales tax, but we're funding ADA through another avenue.
Existing structures or streets too? Or was it just buildings, do you recall?
Uh, I think you could do existing streets. I, it, we would really wanna just take it and run it through Gilmore and Bell on a, on a case by case to, to verify with them um, that, that that project would fall within the intended purpose.
Was that bond for, uh, like doing work here, the memorial?
I think so.
The library and pool? So, those were more buildings more than streets? So, okay.
When I asked, he did not exclude street work. When I asked, he did not exclude street work. Like, he specifically said, you know, if you've got something downtown, like a sidewalk or something with the street or something like that, that would be fine.
Okay.
So I did ask about that specifically.
Your Fund ninety-two actually addresses streets?
Yes. So Fund ninety-two is on the same, same line, leftover bond proceeds. So I, I do have an increase in our street projects this year for using, spending down some of the excess bond proceeds.
That really, again, is a good addition. But it helps explain where the funds come from. Yeah. Well, easy way to track. So Fund ninety-two had quite a bit of money left in it.
Fund ninety-two, I, I want to say it's five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, like on streets, you have total like four forty-six there.
And, and I think if I remember right from we talked yesterday, Lacey, drawing down those two funds, fund sources, we'd have a balance of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left in those accounts respectively.
Sounds about right.
Total. Pretty close to that.
Yeah, one was almost two hundred thousand and the other about four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep. And, and the nice thing about having that is, you know, I, I do have, right now I have two projects tied to that Fund ninety-two specifically. It's the North Tenth from Chestnut to Oak and the FEMA match for North Park from Cottonwood to Parkhurst. So that we can do our larger projects through there. And we also aren't necessarily tied to a specific budget year. You know, if we wanted to move forward with North Tenth or we got approval to move forward with Park, we could do that this year and still be within our budget spending authority. So I think that's important as well.
Okay, yeah. The street project is, was an overlay or something? So it could be used for surfacing? It wasn't another ADA project, was it? It was a?
No, but the street.
Mill overlay.
The.
The ninety, ninety-two.
So for Fund ninety-two, say, say if we wanted to go ahead and move forward with North Tenth Street tomorrow, what the process would be is that we would need to add that project to the resolution, the bond resolution ordinance, whoops, the bond ordinance, and then have Gilmore and Bell add that. So he told me that they would do, you know, in a small analysis to make sure that, that the project we submit falls within the, the bond issuance and is appropriate. So that, the fun, spending down the Fund ninety-two take, does take an extra step. It's project by project where the ADA project is a little bit more open.
Yeah, because the money is, is tied to that bond.
Right.
Stated the purpose. We have to modify.
Yep.
Okay. The upgrade locomotive, is that the old locomotive? The eight thousand for it? Okay.
To fix it and repair it.
Yeah.
Can we talk about the economic and development, Economic Development and Transportation Fund? I'd like to kind of go through and, and speak about all of the items that are, are budgeted to come out of that fund. I think we touched on the fuel, the airport matching funds are coming out of there as well as, this is the same as last year, the demo grant land lease purchase.
What page are you on?
The very first page of.
The capital expenditures, starting with airport.
So yes, we've already talked about the airport, coming down to the demo grant land lease purchase. That is existing. That's, I, I think from twenty eighteen. It's fifty thousand a year. The Economic Development Grant Disbursement. You know, we've talked about forming a committee, an Economic Development Committee. I think it's important to give them something to work with. So that, that money there is set aside for, you know, incentives or whatever comes about this, this committee. It, it just gives them something to work with, is what that represents. And then going to the, the last page, the remaining funds are on the last page. It's the Clink Matching Funds, which has actually changed to Clip, I should say. It is one hundred thousand, and I believe that's for the West Main Project. And.
Which, I'm a little slow on finding. Oh, it's under streets.
Yes.
There we go. Yep.
That, that's Clips.
Yes. And then what you, it, it's not in the, the version that you have, but if you look at what I sent you over email, I had, it was, had this, it's a pivot table. It hadn't updated for two other items, which are the strategic, there's five thousand dollars for strategic planning. And that's really just a placeholder for like a, a consultant or, or maybe a, I don't know, there's like eighty consulting. We've looked into hiring different consultings to help guide staff and commissioners and, and our committees to what direction we want to go with economic development. So that just gives us that as well as an economic development type of consulting work, room, room to hire those, those larger consulting firms to help guide us and put us on the, a path to economic development is what those are for. And then the last item in economic development is, again, a hundred and seventy-five thousand to street improvements. That is not currently tied to a specific project.
I know, and, since that's not tied to a specific project, in the past, we've looked at usually street overlays, larger project. But noticing there's a lot of places that were needing spot patched, cut out, compacted. I wonder if we would be better instead of just depending upon out of the line item for streets to do those individually, if we look at maybe a, a larger project that we could do a significant number of them to make headway on some spot repairs that have, we've got behind on.
Mike, what do, and what do you think? Yeah.
It's really hard doing, have a significant impact with just small crews that maybe there's a way to look at, you know, I don't know, do fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars, whatever, but do a significant attack. So, you know, there's a lot of areas that have, areas that have either deteriorated or had repairs. And instead of just waiting till we overlay the whole street to come in and really hit a lot of those areas in one year. It's not as impressive as a whole street.
And you have to be careful. You, we, we really need to coordinate with our, our six year plan because I would sure hate to go in and, and yet it's nice to fix a street this year, but when, in two years, it's already planning to, to have the, the mill and overlay. So it, it takes a little bit of extra coordination, but that's.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it would, but, you know, some of the holes have been there. It's always worse if it's in front of your house.
Well, the ones that are utility cuts, that, those funds could actually come out of utilities to where you could even do a bigger project.
And I, I do think we increased those types of things a little, a little bit. I mean, some of the fluctuation that you do see in those individual fund expenditure lines are for that.
Yeah.
But not enough, certainly not enough to take care of a huge amount. So, in, in, in this, I've got two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of unspecified street projects. So, I mean, I, I think we've got a lot to work with. Mike had given me kind of a, a list of larger projects, if that's the route we wanted to go, or we could certainly do multiple smaller projects.
Sounds good. Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused. And that stopped, pretty understandable. Okay, let's say we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of street improvements, not tied to any specific project.
Funded, specifically funded out of the Economic Development and Transportation. There's, in addition, there's a hundred and ten thousand funded through the specially used sales tax.
Okay.
Is how I'm getting to the two eighty-five.
That was my question. How do we, how do we get to two eighty-five? Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Is the street sweeper a repair or is that a new one?
A new one.
That's a lease payment.
What?
Forty-four thousand.
Yes.
That's how she put it in there.
It would be a per, yep, purchased, a new, but it's new. It is new. But that would be a lease payment over five years.
Five year?
Yes, five year. And there's also one other lease purchase in here under Airport. It's on the first page and it's, I'm sorry, maybe not the first page. Yes. The tractor and brush hog for twenty-two thousand one hundred.
That's also a lease payment?
Yes.
Okay, there it is. And that is over how many years?
Five. I did, I did all about four percent over five years.
Okay.
Is my estimate. And one, one other, the sanitation truck I want to point out. So that's on the second page at the bottom, the forty thousand, four twenty-one. That, so the first lease payment is an existing lease that we already have. And then this, in twenty nineteen, we were budgeted for a new sanitation truck and are not going to go, not going to purchase it this year. So I've just bumped it to twenty twenty. But again, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean we're going to buy a new sanitation truck. We, we need to get through our analysis. But the potential is still there and that's why it's still budgeted that way. So just wanted to point that out. Not saying we're buying a new sanitation truck.
So in the Fire EMS, AFG Grant Matching Funds, the twenty thousand, is that applied for, or is that on the?
Yes.
You're applying?
Well, I have a bond.
Okay. So that would be kind of like the FEMA.
Pending.
Yes.
We may not get it. Okay.
And, and that's our, the twenty thousand is our match.
That's our match?
Oh, okay.
The twenty thousand is our match, correct?
Oh, okay.
So I can maybe go through, go back through some of these and, and try and put the grant, fill in the grant column on all of them. So I'm a little bit more consistent to give you a better idea. I think we've gone over all of the large ones. On the third page, I will point out that I, I show through the general fund, you know, we've got the five mills to cap, that are earmarked for capital reserve. So you'll see that, that is two thirty-six, three seventy-seven. And then the first column on these pages is the five mil capital reserve. And so that just kind of shows how it has been broken out, funding the street sweeper and the police vehicles. And it's a total of two twenty-eight, two hundred. So it's, it's not, it's not the total of the, the capital, of the five mills. So there's, there will be a little remaining in that non-budgeted account for any, for something that would come up, however you wish to use it.
Run that back in. The balance that would be left in that was?
It'd be approximately twelve thousand.
Okay.
Just for this year. There's, I haven't, I don't have the number from last year, but I don't think you had in the plan to spend all of it.
No, I think when we initially brought that up for discussion, we're trying to build up a fund.
Right.
To use like you are, that we can have a place to go to for these type of purchases. And eventually, you know, it, it could accumulate that we could have a significant.
Right.
Down payment, but as a, a source of, of money to, to deal with the.
Yeah, when I was looking at the rising cost of fire apparatus equipment, you know, the, what I read was the costs were going up around five plus percent a year. So, you know, you look at a, a fire, fire truck, power truck, that's based on twenty-year life expectancy, for lack of a better term. Then you look at what it's going to cost to replace that, you know, with a five percent or more increase a year on purchasing that particular, and all fire apparatus equipment, as far as that goes, pumpers and everything else like that. So it, it, it becomes a sizable amount. You know, this year it was nine hundred and what, eighty-seven thousand dollars. And twenty years from now, it could very well be one million, nine hundred thousand dollars for something similar that we had bought in twenty years earlier. So it, it would be nice to, to build up some type of reserve that we could, we could draw on. I know when I talked to the city administrator over at our Kansas City, theirs is built into their, a portion of their funding comes from, some of their mills are dedicated in, to that particular fund. And I think they're trying to rate, it's either two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars a year that they set aside. And that's taking care of their, their fire apparatus, their pumpers and whatever other equipment they need. So they do have some money built up over the years to draw from that. So.
Do you guys have any other questions on capital? I think we've pretty well gone, gone through all of the big items, but I'm happy to answer any, anything else before I kind of move on. I know we're approaching on an hour and a half.
Water sewer administration, what's the loan number C twenty dash nineteen fifteen dash one?
That's an existing loan.
Is that the KDHE first loan we had?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And then we have the, the sewer loan and the water loan for two hundred thousand each. And then we have the, the sewer loan and the water loan for two hundred thousand each.
On that, um, existing KDHE loan, a hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. What's the, how close are we to, uh, retiring that loan? Are we getting near the tail end of that?
No, I think she's got at least a million left to be.
Okay, so we, we got, we've got, uh, another, a fleet, two hundred, two hundred, twenty years, not two hundred.
Quite sure she's got that.
Okay.
It was, uh, what, a four million to start with?
And that would have been for a project, what do you say, how many years ago, or identified?
Five or six.
This is the Kansas Water Pollution Control Loan. So, I mean, we've got until the payments go out through twenty thirty-two.
Okay. Would that, it would have been related to the flood in two thousand and seven, or, this is, I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking. Or there's something different?
This is the Kansas Water Pollution Control Loan.
Which, what, what was the amount of it?
Four million? Four million?
That would have been Southeast Lift.
Southeast Lift Station, okay.
Was it a four million dollar?
I, I don't have the total on, on.
I knew we had the four million on the Southeast Lift Station, but was there another loan on repair or the construction of the water treatment plant, or sanitation, s- the sewer treatment plant? When it was built?
That I don't have in here. Yeah. I don't have that on here.
Don't know what it is, but we're paying it. We sure enjoy it. I know, there's a table, I think, in the audit that lists all our loans.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay. Does, does it, I think it does list, if we don't have them described what they are, an extra column would really help kind of for us to keep track more, looking at the, uh, treasure reports and things. Cause all those, even the CDBG grants we get, they have the official number, but it's like, what's that mean?
I always have to look them up.
Yeah. Sometimes if it, if it lists the issue amount, it's easy. Does it list the issue amount on that?
It does not on that. It just gives the loan number nineteen fifteen dash oh one.
It doesn't list the date it was issued? Okay.
We can put together a cheat sheet of what all these numbers are, and, and a description that you can refer to.
Okay, October twenty-fourth, twenty eleven for four million, it does.
Twenty eleven?
Final date of maturity, March first, twenty thirty-four.
Okay. That was for the Southeast?
Yeah, that might be the Southeast Lift Station then. I think construction started in thirteen or fourteen. Yeah. Then I think we had a couple other lift stations included, and. Yeah. Right. Keeping it flowing.
Um, I, okay, I do have a, a question. Um, it just says band shell, electric, ten thousand dollars. Is that re- specifically tied to redoing all the electrical feeds for that, or?
It, it, it doesn't, it's not capable of like a band to come, you know, and start the band. Um, it's got the old screw in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it needs upgraded so that people can utilize the band shell more.
Screw infuses?
Yeah.
Basically remained unchanged from whenever that, those, that electrical was put into the band shell?
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Use those, just put a penny in there.
Okay, good. That's good. Okay, um.
Always found a penny on top of the handle.
I did. Oh, and maybe you know this. How did we come out on the firework display? I know there was a, a fundraising, uh.
Five.
As I heard, we're, Jim said we're around forty-five hundred short, so we'll have to make that up.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the only other large thing in here that I, I don't think we touched on is, I do have, um, some transfers to a city hall, a nineteen sixteen city hall separate fund. Um, we're zeroing out the Memorial Hall Tax Credit Fund and transferring the hundred and sixty-five thousand there. And then, um, in the specially used sales tax, we are spending down thirty thousand of the current, the twenty-twenty estimated revenue for specially used sales tax. And then the, a large chunk of that, the four hundred thousand, is, um, a fund balance transfer. So cash out of that account to, um, fund city hall.
Okay, run that last statement by, when you said four hundred and thirty thousand, I can't, I'm not writing as fast as I used to.
So, just a breakdown of, of how I arrived at that number is thirty thousand dollars was remaining, you know, we've got a quarter percent that goes to building and facility upgrades. Um, I, I went through and I did all of our building and facility budgeted, you know, upgrades that, that we would like to do. And I saw that we had a, a remaining thirty thousand rather than go find another project. I, I did that current year quarter percent to city hall. And then, we've got cash in that account. So four hundred thousand dollars of the fund balance, the cash sitting there, is going to be transferred out of specially used sales tax and earmarked for, um, nineteen sixteen city hall project. And so this is just budgeting that transfer to that fund.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to move on and just touch on, um, the payroll numbers. Not much of a change. I've, I've included in your packet the twenty nineteen pay plan, which this was just recently adopted, I think, May twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Um, so this is kind of the base of what I'm using for my payroll numbers. Next, you, you will see a, a survey that I received. Independence did not participate in it, but this was just a survey sent out to get an idea of, um, what other municipalities were, were doing, um, showing if they were doing a COLA or a merit or step increase. I think that this shows that Independence is kind of under, under the bar on, on this. You know, maybe next year, I have not budgeted a COLA or a across-the-board, uh, increase, but possibly we should look into that in twenty twenty-one to remain competitive, um, and stay up to date with our peer group. Currently, in the twenty twenty budget, proposed budget, there is a three percent merit increase. But, but that is it.
What's COLA stand for?
Cost of Living Adjustment.
That's a generic brand for Coke?
COLA. That's what it's for, so you can buy those soft drinks.
Yeah.
Where did this, where did this come from?
Uh.
Was it from the league?
Kelly, do you remember?
Uh, it says K C M, so that is the Kansas Association of City Managers.
Was there a reason we don't participate in it, or?
I, I don't know why. Um, we might have just not seen the email, cause it's a listserv. It's usually how they do these.
The league has a, uh, has some information, surveys that, uh, I forget what I saw in one of their publications and called, and we didn't participate. So you gotta pay thirty dollars to get the, the information.
Yeah. I, I can't tell you why, why we didn't, but I, I added us in, um, to give a reference point where we're at. And then, the only other thing that I, I do want to bring up as far as payroll is, in this, uh, pru- or proposed budget, we do have, uh, two, two changes. One is, um, we're proposing to add a position of administrative aid. And, and Kelly, I'll kind of let you kind of talk about how this came up and, and the roles and responsibilities that, that this person would have.
We are needing some clerical assistance. I mean, we spend a lot of our time doing clerical things that we could have somebody else do so we can do higher level work and work on some of this other stuff. So, we have looked at that in the past, and also we have some department heads that don't have any clerical support either. So it would be somebody that could be utilized in that as well, and also serve as like a receptionist or things like that. I mean, I'm answering phone calls all day long and having people walk in our offices when we're trying to concentrate. So I have, you know, I, personally, I just work late when everybody's gone, and that's when I can get my stuff done. And I can do that most of the time, but, you know, sometimes, you know, it's just you have continual interruptions and things like that, and this person could help with that. And also, it's a customer service thing, like right now, we're all up here. If somebody wants to see us, they're probably wandering around saying, well, there's nobody up here, where are they at, you know? It's, it's not a really good perception as far as customer service. And, you know, it could really help us up as far as free us all up to do, you know, the higher level work that we are paid to do and have somebody else do that, you know, handling the walk-ins and, and, and the minor clerical stuff that, you know, doesn't take a great deal of, of, you know, skill to do. And that was our thought on that.
And currently, it's, it's in these numbers as, um, in the pay grade eleven.
Which is a clerk, same level as a
Clerk one.
Beginning clerk one.
So the position would basically be a, a person that would identify like a floater, they'd be working in, maybe helping out other departments also, or?
I actually would like for that person to be able to be cross-trained in some other departments if needed. So like if they're short, if Lacey Short in her department, we need somebody to cover lunches while people go to lunches and somebody's sick or somebody's on vacation, we would like them to be able to go down and take payments or whatever and, and help in that or municipal order or something like that. But, um, and, and it would help like other department heads maybe enter their purchase orders and things, clerical things. I know Terry and, and, and Mike, as I said, they spend hours entering these things that if it was coded, you could have a clerical person enter that, and they could be free to go off and do the stuff they need to do. And, and we have that same issue. But also, just, just being there to, to greet people and a receptionist is just, you know, I don't know how many times, it's like, oh, I came up here three or four times and I've called and, but we were in meetings and nobody was up there. And it's just, it's, it's just, you know, I think customer service-wise and freeing us up to be more productive, to do the stuff we're paid to do would be, you know, it would, it would be a win-win for everybody.
The, the other position is, is not necessarily a new position, but repurposing one. Um, currently, the police department has a, a dispatch position that has been unfilled. And they want to change that to a records clerk, and Jerry will give you some more information on that.
Jerry's heading to the microphone.
I have something that I got, I've been working on for a few days, so if that's okay, I'll just hand you guys this. I don't expect you to read it right now and be up to speed on it, cause I'd like for you to take a little bit of time to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks.
But I can go over some brief highlights if you like.
Yeah.
So, as you go through there, you'll see, uh, the volume of calls that we're handling. Nineteen thousand, two hundred calls for service, eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five nine-one-one calls, and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine total telephone calls in twenty eighteen. We're dispatching for the police department, Fire EMS, Cherryvale EMS and Fire Department, and the North End Montgomery County Rule Fire. As crashes come in, we dispatch those out as well, or if they come in over nine-one-one, we dispatch those out. We handle all the nine-one-one phone, so, cell phone calls in the county. And we're projected, we're on pace right now to handle twenty-seven hundred EMD calls for twenty nineteen. And those average about four minutes and nineteen seconds a call, to give you an idea about what all they're doing. Our dispatchers also handle walk-ins, call-out, city departments, siren testing, security, camera monitoring, IPD Facebook updates, and requests for helicopters. So, we are the only agency in the area that dispatches and does records. We, we do not have any records, we do not have dedicated records personnel. And so, as we go, what happened was in twenty sixteen, uh, we had a dispatcher clerk that was dedicated to records. But due to call volume, I mean, you can see that call volume. Due to call volume, we put them into the rotation so that we have two dispatchers on during peak times. The problem with that is records fulfillment and records requests come in when? Peak times. So, that dispatcher is very hit and miss being available to handle the records. And so, um, it, records are being handled catch-as-catch-can, and that is not good. And what doesn't get caught gets somewhere, translates into overtime for somebody, whether it be, you know, I can't get my supervisor duty done, duties done right now, I'm doing records, so now I've gotta stay late and work on supervisor duties cause I didn't get them done during my workday. That's what's happening. If you go down through there, you can see on that table that we spend almost seventy to almost ninety hours a week. We're sixty-nine to eighty-eight hours a week doing records requests, and you can see all the different records requests doing, that we're doing there. And so that translates into overtime. Uh, but I can't give you, all I can tell you, all I can give you is overtime for twenty eighteen and projected for twenty nineteen. But I, I don't have a mechanism in place to go back and say, this was done. This is credited to records. I mean, some of that's credited to New Wallace, some of that's credited to, you know, major events. You know, we had the two standoffs in one day, we had three standoffs in three weeks. We just had a similar situation over the weekend or so ago. So, you know, to say that some of it could go to, to, uh, emergency management, we have a storm or something, it's hard to say with any, uh, true accuracy, how much of that. But you can see the significant amount of that has got to be going to overtime. So, that's why we're proposing changing a open dispatcher slot in the budget to a records position and dedicating a person to that. We have one of the options, uh, if we don't do that, what we may have to consider is our arrest policies. And right now, if it's a felony case, we, we arrest them. And they sit in jail until their preliminary hearing. The issue is that the county attorney's office requires the entire case file to be in their hands within three days. Now typically, what happens is, you only have to prove a criminal case up to, uh, probable cause that it happened and that there's adequate evidence to support going to trial. But, at this point. But, at this point, um, we need to have the entire case file in in three days. And so that added bit of work for our people, uh, it, it just puts a crunch on us. Puts a big time crunch on those cases. So for instance, in twenty eighteen, there were two hundred and four charges in which a person was held in the county jail. Now that doesn't mean there were two hundred and four persons, because obviously many times you're gonna have multiple charges in a criminal case. But, um, I didn't want to dedicate someone to go back through the numbers and drill that deeply into it. We can. It just takes a lot of time. But, just as a guide, if we changed our arrest policies and said, "We're only gonna hold people that commit violent felonies. We're not gonna hold drug offenders, we're not gonna hold counterfeiters, we're not gonna hold forgers, we're not gonna hold felony thefts, burglaries, that kind of thing." If we just said, "We're only gonna hold accused sex offenders and accused violent offenders," then we can reduce that three-day deadline by sixty-eight percent and take it down to sixty-four felony charges based on twenty eighteen numbers. I, I do not want to go that route. Um, I'm very uncomfortable with that route. And I also haven't discussed it with the county attorney. So, the same amount of work would still have to be done. It just wouldn't have to be done in that three-day deadline. So that's kind of that report in a real brief nutshell.
So, what you're saying is that the dispatcher clerk position will be eliminated, and you'll go to a records clerk position?
That's what needs to happen, and all that that requires is, number one, making the, you know, settling on the job description, and then going back and modifying in the, in the near future. We can go back and modify our dispatcher clerk one and two, and dispatch supervisors' job descriptions. Um, we actually, we probably may not want to modify the supervisor's job description, because that person would report to the supervisor, so we'd probably not modify that. So, pretty simple fix. I've gotten a few job descriptions from area agencies, because as you, like I said, we're the only one doing it, so Parsons and Coffeyville really quickly zinged their, uh, job descriptions up to me. Um, and then, of course, changing our, our job descriptions is just taking a few things out and adding some other things that are more important in there.
Yeah, you're not adding a actual position, you're just re-describing their responsibility, eliminating dispatch responsibility from them, and now they're gonna be strictly records.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's an open position in the budget that's not filled right now with a dispatcher.
I could see the, the problem of, of twofold, like you're describing, that, you know, you gotta have your paperwork done, and it's gotta be available, and you've gotta meet other people's schedules, and if you can't do it, then you're really not doing your job, so it would be a great improvement for the department.
I, 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 definitely.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
What level pay grade would that position be?
We have it in, right, in the proposed budget as an eleven.
It would be an eleven. In the current budget, and, and the, so the, if we were to hire that dispatch position right now, it's in the budget at a level thirteen, which is, uh, starts out at fourteen oh three an hour, but we're proposing the position at a, at eleven eleven, so it starts out at twelve ninety-seven an hour.
Yeah, so similar to the other administrative?
Yes, and a part of that is because those dispatchers, uh, are compensated because of the certifications that they're required to have, and this position wouldn't be required, to my knowledge, to have any certifications. I may be wrong on that. There's, there may be some Casey just stuff or something.
Other than to be able to file correctly?
Well, to be competent in the job, yes.
And years ago, those were separate positions. Actually, I started in records in this department, and it was separate at one time.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds great, man.
Yeah, it does. Sounds like a, a good trade.
No-brainer.
Yeah.
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 Other than that, there are no other, no other changes, um, to, to personnel in this proposed budget. Those are the highlights.
Uh, Jerry, thanks for recognizing, um, that, that, uh, by changing the position and the duties, that you saw that, that we're not actually adding one, but you're basically taking duties away that are being forced on your dispatchers now, and that you were able to see that and come up with a solution for that. That's good. Thanks.
Okay, well, that, that takes us through this proposed budget packet. Um, at the end, I just, I added in the strategic planning session for twenty nineteen, the update, um, just to help guide you through, through your review. Um, but I don't think anything we really need to discuss right now. Just mentioned that the, the number one intention statement was to focus on streets and ADA. Number two, help for new business recruitment and retention. And the third, uh, quality of life maintenance and improvement. So, I, I truly believe that this proposed budget touches on all three of those key areas and, and sets us up for, for success, so.
Can I get you to back up just a little bit? The contact person that you dealt with, uh, when we were talking about ADA, I got the first name. Was that Belinda or Melinda?
Belinda with a B.
And the last name?
Banger?
B A U G E R.
Okay.
Or?
Gotcha. Thank you. And you had sent some updates, but I didn't, I didn't download them either. Uh, I think at the last, you had mentioned, I think at the start?
If you would prefer to have a three-ring notebook that has those updated pages, the, the line item detail, I mean, I can put something more in-depth together rather than have you print out and swap pages and, and things like that. It's, you guys let me know what, what you need, and I can make it happen.
I was, well, I was, okay, maybe I misunderstood. I was under the impression that you had sent some changes here prior to the meeting.
Very minor.
Oh, okay.
Valuation.
I didn't, I didn't catch that part. I just heard some changes, and I hadn't looked or downloaded anything, so. So, that was my, my question.
Yeah, I mean, this, the, the capital, the summary of capital expenditures, um, did, did change the, the total dollars, didn't, like, nothing within the, that would flow through to the, the summary of the budgets changed. Just something wasn't pulling through correctly, um, on my spreadsheet. Um, so it's, this new version will help you see that those totals tie to the individual budgets. So, so I can get those together for you. And then, there was, the other change was a mistake on the bond and interest fund. Uh, the twenty nineteen revised and twenty twenty to twenty twenty variance column just had a formula error. So it was showing that there was a large variance, but, but really, if you compared the two numbers, it's twenty, it's a twenty thousand dollar decrease, not, not a, I think it showed an increase of quite a bit. So, it was a formula error. Um, and, and one other thing that I do want to mention, um, in going through this budget preparation process, I did come across two, two twenty nineteen budgets that will need, that I know of now that need to be revised and amended. Um, the first one is the airport fund, and that's purely due to, we've got an increase in sales, so our, our cost of fuel is going up, and we will need to amend that budget for that. Um, the second one is the special use sales tax budget. Um, in twenty nineteen, it, it looks like we, there was an error in, we, we budgeted a incoming transfer to the general fund for that quarter percent, but it was just mistakenly left out of the expenditures on the special use sales tax fund. And so, we're, we've got revenue coming into the general fund, but no expend, expenditure coming out of special use sales tax. So we'll need to amend that budget to, to show it's like four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars um, of what's actually going to be coming out of that fund.
When's the deadline to do that?
The end of the year. I mean, I, I, my preference is to do it with this, since I know of those two right now. I mean, we may, we may get to November, December and see that our airport sales are up again, and we have to amend it again. Highly likely, but I, I think since we know it now, let's just get it taken care of.
How does this tie with the, uh, two thousand eighteen audit? Have you got any results on, on that audit yet?
I do, and you guys will get a presentation next week.
All right. How exciting.
Yeah. I think you'll be impressed, and, um, a much better result. I think we've improved leaps and bounds. Um, but the, the twenty eighteen numbers in here are, are in line with the twenty eighteen audit.
So you used figures from it?
Yep.
That's good.
Yep.
That helps.
It really does.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of why I've been scrambling, is to get those updated numbers in. It's a long process.
Well, gentlemen, any other questions on this?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
I don't either. Thank you, Lacey. Appreciate all the hard work and good job and the information that you've laid out for us. Give us a chance to, I can go over my notes, and if I have anything else additional, I can-
One other, we should probably just mention the, the timeline. Um, so we're at July seventeenth. The, by July twenty-fifth, we need to set the date for the budget public hearing, which will be eight fourteen nineteen. Um, so we've got between now and the twenty-fourth to, to meet again. However, many times, if you guys want to have another special meeting where we all get together, or I am available to meet, um, you know, at your convenience, uh, but we, we will need to, to set the date at our July twenty-fifth meeting.
Okay.
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 Could I suggest a short break?
Break? Oh, my gosh.
Five minutes.
Oh, yeah, at least five minutes.
Yeah.
At least five. Yeah, let's do that.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we take a break for five minutes.
Second?
All in favor, second, five, I say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I agree.
Okay, we are, uh, back in session. And moving right along. Um, before we move right along, do you gentlemen feel like we need to schedule another session with?
Another budget session?
Another budget session. Be, I mean, we're, we're between now and the twenty-fifth. Okay, um, what's your schedules look like?
Another special session?
Yes.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth is just a week.
Perhaps Wednesday, maybe the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that, that ties into something else I need to print forward.
Uh-oh.
Or this, this Friday?
Yeah, I could, this Friday. Um, well?
Or the twenty-third, next Tuesday, I don't care.
Okay. I, um, I talked to Nikki Harrison this morning prior to the meeting, and she's given me a couple of dates that she's available next week. Uh, and that would be, um, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, but the twenty-fifth is a commission meeting. Uh, she would be coming in from Topeka, and, uh, we did, uh, we determined after talking to her that a ten o'clock meeting, that would give her, uh, enough time to be here for, for a ten AM meeting. Uh, but, uh, the twenty-third is a Tuesday, and the twenty-fourth is a Wednesday.
I, I can make whatever work. I, I will say that I am scheduled to be on vacation Monday and Tuesday. My, my brother is visiting from LA. Um, but I can make Tuesday work if, if that's the date that's available.
Look, Nikki's available Wednesday. Would you want to do, like, at nine o'clock?
For?
For the budget, and then ten o'clock?
On Tuesday, or, or on Wednesday, you mean?
Wednesday. Yeah, I don't want to interfere with Lacey's-
Brother.
Brother, yeah.
Yeah.
Family first.
So do a nine o'clock with, for budget, and then a ten o'clock with-
Yeah.
Okay.
The league.
That'd be the Tuesday, the twenty-third?
With who?
With the budget.
No, but it just gives us that, not leeway.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so nine o'clock Tuesday, the twenty-third, for another budget session?
No, no, it's the twenty-fourth. Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Oh, the twenty-fourth, excuse me. Okay.
If we keep it at nine o'clock, then I don't think I'll forget.
Okay.
And then if we get down early, we'll just-
And then Nikki at ten o'clock?
Right.
Also on the twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah.
Ten o'clock. Gotcha. I, I told her I'd get back with her later today and let her know the, if, uh, what date we were able to meet with her on, and she's good, any of those dates, so.
Don't forget to pencil in August fifteenth for the medium trainer at ten AM.
Okay.
August fifteenth. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have that on my calendar.
No, I didn't either. I, I remembered it, but I didn't list it. Okay.
What, what do you need from me prior to, to Wednesday? Do you need, do you want some updated information?
The full thing?
Do all of you, do all of you want it?
Sure.
Okay.
We want to check every penny Barb's gonna spend and make sure.
As long as you promise not to take five hundred dollars from this line and move it to this line.
We make no promises. That's what we're famous for.
Okay, so we've, we've got that part out of the way. Um, moving to items, number three, item for commission action. And this was considering approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy, and I had a chance to visit with Lacey yesterday after our, um-
Your other marathon discussion.
Yes. Anyway, uh, and I just had some concerns that I brought up, and I just wanted her to give just a little brief summary. And then I asked a, a question in an email as to, uh, identify a number. Um, when you initially made the presentation, and I don't remember the date, but you'd indicated that the year that you looked at, there would be, looking at a dollar amount from three thousand up to twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe you indicated there, there would be five thousand four hundred and fifty, uh, transactions that would be in, in occurring in the, one of the years that you looked at. And I asked you to identify if that, if we were looking at the limit of over ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, uh, what would that, what would that number look like?
So I broke down the, I took that same report that I used, and, um, the, the three thousand to ten thousand dollar range um, has approximately one point seven million- has approximately $1.7 million of spend, which represents 14% of the 2018, that population that I looked at. It was 309 purchase orders, which would be the equivalent of 15, 45 hours in admin time. The next step was between 10 and 15, and that dropped to 825,000. 7% of the spend, 67 purchase orders, 335 hours. Between 15 and 20, it was 930,000, which is 8%. 49 purchase orders, 245, which equates to 245 hours, looking at the five-hour minimum. And then the $25,000 and over was 6.5 million, roughly. 54% of that dollar spend and 67 purchase orders. And when going back and looking at this information, I still think that it's valid and relevant information. However, I don't, I think I want to caution to make judgments even based solely off of this population, because even just briefly looking at it, I can tell that things that I would expect to see, like, I looked at just, what am I looking at in that over $25,000 range? And it, things I expected to see weren't always captured. So, I mean, the information is only as good as the data that goes into it. And I have some questions and concerns over if we're really capturing the full population. You know, this morning, when I was looking into it, I tried to run an audit report, but I kept getting errors, because I want to see very granular. You know, it could be that one of these 25, over $25,000 purchase orders could represent a $50,000 purchase order that had five $10,000 line items within the purchase order. And, you know, so does that truly belong in the over $25,000 category? Or does that belong in the $10,000 category? I, to me, I would want to know on a more granular level detail to properly bucket those items. And my confidence in that this does it has kind of gone down, because when I went to look to see, you know, is, what all is in that 25, over $25,000 population? You know, I went quickly, just looked for, you know, like, certain street project, and I didn't see it there. And I, you know, I know that that's over $25,000.
Sure.
So I haven't, I didn't dig into it more this morning, I didn't have time. I still think that, I still think that you're going to see this sort of pattern, you know, that our our big projects that make up a large portion of our total dollar spend are still going to be brought to you. It's more of the operating expenses that are typically on a purchase-by-purchase level going to be smaller, you know, under $25,000, that would fall in Section 3 of this policy. And I think that really plays into the discussion that we had yesterday. You know, your, part of your concern was getting comfortable with the dollar limits outlined in Section 3, on Section 3.1. And I kind of went over with you that this section really deals with those commodity and contractual-type operating expenses. From my discussions with you and with others, that, you know, we want to make sure that certain types of transactions are caught on a lower-dollar-level basis. And, for example, professional services, I think, is the top one that everyone is concerned with. And I think it's important to note that those types of purchases are not, they don't fall within Section 3.1. There is a different section for professional services with a much lower dollar limit. It's $5,000.
Yes.
So I think, I think that the goal that you want to accomplish is being accomplished with this. You don't want to see all of the run-of-the-mill operating-type purchases that are over $5,000 or $10,000 or $15,000. You want to see those consulting-type expenses brought to you. And I truly think that that's what this does. I mean, the level is at $5,000. You know, that's not to say there, you may see a purchase order come across for some consulting firm that's $15,000, and you think, well, hey, oh, wait a minute, you know, that's, that's over the $5,000 limit, we never saw that. Well, within that invoice, which makes up a purchase order, you may, they may have billed us for five different projects that are all, all under. So, you know, you can't, you won't be able to look at it on, like, an invoice level. It'll be project by project, but we may get an invoice for $10,000. And that's what you're going to see, the purchase order come through in the appropriations would be a check for $10,000.
Right.
But that would make up multiple projects under the limit. So I did want to point that out.
I think you got to, well, I understand your point is, and my understanding, we don't want to have to approve specifically the operating expenses of the city, but the contracts and consultants and the equipment purchases, things like that. I think, like you're talking about, a consultant, we would look at the initial contract and the amount there, but the invoices that come in after the contract is executed, we wouldn't want that approval, but just the base contract.
Right.
Then, you know, looking, so, you know, some of the small consultants that might be on an on-call, you set the parameters for that on-call contract upfront, and it could span multiple projects that wouldn't have to come for approval, but the initial concept of the on-call contract and parameters have been established that we're involved with that knowledge. You know, we don't need, if you're going to order $15,000 worth of toilet paper, you know, I don't want to have to approve your toilet paper purchase, or erasers, or.
Which is, which is why there are the two sections. And so I, you know, Louis had said he was a little uncomfortable, you know, with these numbers. They seem, they seem high. But, but the types of purchases and transactions that fall in that category are not what you are necessarily looking out for. And that is absolutely why the professional service section is so much lower, to bring those to your attention. And the capital projects, we just talked about that for a minute. I mean, those would technically fall under Section 3.1. And so if we budgeted to purchase a $20,000 vehicle, under this, we would have the authority to purchase it for the $20,000, because it's under Section 3.1 limits and budgeted, you know, so we could buy it.
It's a budgeted item that we will have already signed off on.
On the capital side.
Capital side, yes.
You know, we found it for $15,000. We, you know, but if, for whatever reason, you know, we needed to go, that vehicle price is now $26,000, then we'd have to bring it. I'm assuming, you know, the budget would have been for the 25, so really you're going over $1,000. That, that in itself would necessitate needing to bring it. But I do want to point that out, that if a $20,000 vehicle is in the budget, that purchase would fall under Section 3.1 and be within our spending authority. So, so that would be there.
Right. And my other questions that I brought were, because I didn't want to also get into the run-of-the-mill items, your contractual services, your utilities, your insurances, your papers, all that. That's something that, that's, it's a part of doing business, and those are already fixed costs that come on a yearly basis. But my other one was that went on changes in scope of work, because I, in the short time I've been here, I think, having the, in, when there has been a change in a work order, in other words, on a contract that we have, and then a contractor comes back and says, you know, this panel I was planning on salvaging, it's not salvageable. I didn't plan on having to replace it with a new panel, so I'm coming before you that I'm going to need a change order of $10,000 for the panel and $2,000 labor to change it out. This was something that was anticipated. So that was something that hasn't, that always come before the, has there ever been a dollar limit set as to, to? When do they come? Are they over?
We have a change order on a project that's been previously approved for a certain dollar amount.
They would all come?
We bring the change orders to the commission.
Regardless of, regardless of the dollar amount?
Yeah, because you approved a project and a contract at a certain dollar amount. Anytime that dollar amount changes, you need to approve it. Because that, you know, it modifies it. Sometimes we have change orders that are decreased, it just depends on what it is.
Sure.
So, yeah, change orders always have, as far as I'm aware, and will continue to do so.
And the language in here maybe is what is confusing. I mean, on the change order, Section 6, it is saying that if you had a, for example, if you had a project that was approved for $20,000, and then you had a change order come in for $1,000. The way that I interpret this is you would not have to bring that $1,000 change order to the commission, because it is, the total project is still under $25,000. You know, the project would have initially been brought and approved for 20. Now, if that change order was $5,000, you're now at $25,000. And that change order and any subsequent change order would need to be brought to the commission for approval. And kind of the same, similar situation with the change in scope. Now, I don't think, maybe that's not necessary. Maybe we do just strike that and say that, you know, change orders and change of scope are brought back to the commission. I think that that is something that we can compromise on, and we don't want to make it more complicated. Oh, do we have to bring this one? Do we not have to bring it? You know, we're, we don't want that. So if that is the concerns with Section 5 and 6, I, I think that we could change the wording. Do you read it as that interpretation?
Yeah, if, if the original if the original scope of the contract is changed, but then we're modifying. Now, I guess, there's two areas to look at that maybe are being grouped in into one. If you have a contract to borrow chemicals, to buy chemicals, and that changes, and we've agreed it, the scope's a little different than we're looking at a road project, a waterline replacement, a building, that the scope has been established above.
I don't see a contract for chemicals as a change of scope or change of work. That's, that would be, that really wouldn't fall into Section 5 or 6.
They're bit out by so much per unit.
Yeah.
At the beginning of the year, it just depends on how many units you buy, so.
When I met with Louis yesterday and talked about this, I, random example, so say we were going to change, we had a project to change out all the outlets in this room. And, you know, the bid spec said that there are 30 outlets, and it's going to cost us $20,000. So if they come back and say, oh, we missed one, there's really, or five, there's 35 of them, and now it's going to be an extra $5,000. I mean, that's a change in the scope of the work, but it's, you know, the intent, the project was intended to replace all of the outlets. And, you know, if we missed an outlet, but it's still the same price per outlet, and we're just increasing that contract, that's what I see as a change in scope. Or a change order. You know, then if they came in and said, we're, you know, yeah, we're changing all of the outlets, but really, as we're working on this project, we notice you need to do this as well. Or this would be great, we could come in and do this also while we're in there. That would be your change of scope. The project itself is changing intent and adding something that wasn't originally approved. You know, I see the extra five outlets, that's, we're not not going to do it because it wasn't included in the original scope, but we may not do whatever extra service that they are bringing to us. If that kind of tells you where I'm coming from versus change in scope or change orders.
When I read it originally, yeah, I think I saw a different, listening to the way you explain the breakdown, gives a different perspective. And I think I need to reread, to go through, to follow, to see if I, if I can read it the way you've described it, then it's clear, and if not, then I'll identify why I got confused, and we can address that. Because I see what you're identifying, the different points, but at first, few times going through, I, you know, saw it all as one, as a blanket. But what you're describing, and this is what I hear, is that it's got two portions. It's got a portion with the table and the chart, which is primarily set up for operational expenses. Then there's a second section that deals with contractual services beyond the everyday norm. And I was reading it all as, as one, one unit.
So, yes, it's, let me find the section on. Professional Services is Section 9. And it states in there, "Services such as engineering, architectural, consulting, or other specialized technical services."
And I took that as being back up into the table.
Okay, yeah, no. This, this, when it's that type of service, it is $5,000.
So the Section 9 doesn't have some, apply to any of the tables?
Let me read one thing.
We got a, an email of a consultant being hired for $10,000. So that was above the $5,000.
Say that again, sorry. exempts them, so some, uh, a service under five thousand dollars would technically exempt you from this process for choosing them. And there's this four-step process. In the event that the estimated cost of the scope of the services in this, so you, you've got, you've got a service that's gonna cost five thousand dollars, I think this is saying that if, if it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, the... There are additional specifications on, on the committee that you select. But, but the fourth, the fourth step of this process is that the department head, um, shall prepare a recommendation of award for governing body approval, and, and this process is in place for any services over five thousand dollars. So, it, it doesn't, I mean, it's not necessarily like excluding, section three point one doesn't apply to this, but within this section, there's just a lower threshold.
Yeah.
Um, so Jeff is saying that on section nine point one, um, before item one, you can, we could add, if we need clarification, for it to say, "Contracts for professional services such as engineering, architectural, consulting, and other specialized or technical services shall be obtained through the following process," and not the process outlined in section three point, in section three.
Excellent.
Well... What's the, the relevance of the twenty-five thousand dollars that's in item three, just, that just says if, if it is, the department head's gonna be on the...
I think our current practice is that we have all department heads, so basically are serving as this committee, we, we get together and discuss it. Um, this is just saying, I, I think that a significant project is being labeled as twenty-five thousand dollars or more, and, and the department head will have a say in it. Um, I mean, I don't think that's necessarily important, because I think the way we're doing it now is they're being included on all.
"A selection committee shall be established by the department head or city manager to review the proposals and rate each firm. In the event the estimated cost of the scope of services for the request or proposed proposal qualifications exceeds twenty-five thousand, the applicable department head shall serve on the selection committee for that proposal evaluation."
So, that's just saying I have...
So, who would be on, if it's less than twenty-five thousand?
Whoever the department head or city manager would select. So, I mean, if, if, if I, as the finance department, have some consultant that I want to bring in for six thousand dollars, you know, I could say, um, you know, Kelly and, and David and Mike, you know, look at these proposals with me, tell me what you think, and, you know, for, for under five thousand dollars, I, I would, or for under twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, I could take just their recommendations. For over twenty-five thousand dollars, I would then also step in and, and hold a bigger weight in the selection process. Um, I mean, like I said, I, I don't, I don't think that this has much... Many implications, I, I mean, I think that the way we're doing it right now is, the, the four of us would already be getting together, and as a group, be making the decision. I don't see it as necessarily more important to have the dollar limit, but I also don't see a, an issue with having it. Um, I think it's just noting that large projects should have input from that specific department head.
But isn't the department head the one that's initiating?
They're selecting the committee, they're not necessarily, they don't have to be on the committee. Or, or the city manager could select it.
Yeah.
Thing that recognizes that a department head usually has more expertise than other city staff members in that particular area.
Well, that's what, that's what I, I see, but it's, it's like the department head is already gonna be involved with selecting the product or selecting a consultant.
This just says you can't omit him from the committee if it's over twenty grand, twenty-five grand.
You can't have a city manager come in and, and...
Okay.
Say, "I don't want you to serve on this selection committee, this is a significant, it just adds an extra layer of protection." I don't see ever having to use it, but...
Yeah, doesn't seem like s- somebody would, a city manager would search for, uh, a consultant in wastewater, and then exclude Terry from...
Serving.
The committee, but this says...
This just protects you against...
He's gotta be there, okay. There's a little, you know, using logic, this where, you know, because in logic, you wouldn't do it, so why are you telling him? You gotta do it. Like, you gotta put a jack under a car to change a tire, and it's mandatory that you do it.
If all had hundred percent logic, we wouldn't need this policy.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Any?
So, that was the, the biggest item that, that we had gone over, is the, the difference, um, between section three and section nine. Um, so I, I think that, that the goal, what we want out of this, is to safeguard against those types of purchases, those consulting and specialized technical items, and I, I really think that this, this does, I mean, that, that in itself, you know, you, you've talked about compromise, um, I mean, I, I do think that this is a, a compromise, um, that we're lowering that level. It's only five thousand dollars for consulting is not very much.
No.
Um, so I, I, I already believe that this will, will be bringing a lot more to you, um, and that it narrows it down and targets the types of items that you want to see. Um, my professional opinion is that if you lowered the limits in section three, it wouldn't meet your end objectives, it wouldn't meet your goals, it would just bring more items to you, and, and that's not what we want to do.
Right.
I think, I don't think, uh, what I saw are desires to get involved with the, the day-to-day...
Right.
...services, but yet still be aware of the contractual services that are going on, the, uh, consultants, the engineering, that we get the system going up, that we don't hire a consultant and have half of the work initiated, and then, oh yeah, here's a contract, we need to execute it now, but we've got half the road already designed and, and the drawings.
I, I, I think that's what this does, is, is what I'm saying, and, but I, I will say, this will be a trial period, because what I kind of envision is, you know, it, we have to have some leeway to do groundwork before we bring you recommendations, or else we're never going to get anywhere. I see the potential of, you know, hitting roadblocks to where we, we can't even get our ideas on paper if we have trouble getting preliminary designs done. Um, you know, I could, I could be wrong, but five thousand dollars just seems like an awful low limit to me, um, but I, I think we're willing to start there and, and, you know, see where it gets us. If, you, you may be seeing too much, or maybe you'll say too little, um, but I think it gives us a good, a really good starting point.
Yeah, the contracts, well, we've had, had road projects that are ready to go out to bid, and we haven't had a engineering contract, you know, we'll, we'll be way into the project before we find that the study's being done. Five thousand dollars, uh, isn't much of a contract, but the major ones of, of going in and initiating, uh, preliminary designs, you know, I think, I think the commission should know the progress of the plans, what projects are, are going to be started ahead of time, then find it on appropriations. I think if we're gonna look at, at projects, we should come together and say, here's our list of what we're, we're planning, and then let's say, okay, we're gonna go out and, and initiate a, a preliminary study, but just the knowledge and the understanding of what's going on, find it, uh, when it comes up that we've contracted with a, an architect to do preliminary designs on a building that we didn't know we had.
Hmm, so maybe I just haven't seen something like that come across to, to fully under, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, um, I just haven't seen it in my, my time here, um, but I would think something like that would be caught under this, um, definitely. So, I, I, I think, again, we're, this is meeting your goals and objectives.
And, you know, there's been a couple of occasions that it has happened, so that's what we're, just wanting to make sure if we're gonna do this, we're on the same wavelength that, you know, we, we get the cementals and just communicate, and, and that's the whole thing we're asking, is just communicate upfront, not to hold you back, but, you know, make us aware too of where we're going in the long run. And, you know, I think there's some things we, we've talked about, that, uh, the information we get, uh, you know, like the RFP or RFQ for the ADA consultant, uh, you know, it lets us know where we're going and what we're thinking, and when we've asked and it hasn't been given, it just like, you know, what's going on? I don't like asking three or four times.
Is that on our website?
It was, when it was open, it was posted on our website.
I mean, it's available, I apologize that we didn't print, print it out and hand to you or email it to you, but I, it, we're not trying to hide any information, it's pub, that's public information and readily available on our website, but yeah, I, I think our communication can improve leaps and bounds, and I, I don't disagree with that one bit.
We talked about that at length yesterday, you and I did, I leave a lot longer than I thought I was gonna be here.
Yeah.
And you did too, so...
So, you communicated a lot.
I talked to zero yesterday.
Oh, my goodness, we communicated a lot. Yeah, uh, so yeah, I, I think you've addressed, in the meeting we had yesterday, addressed where I was coming from, because like I said, I didn't also didn't want to get involved in the, the nuts and bolts of the everyday running of the city operation, but there's, what I indicated to you is where I had my concerns with, and, and that was reflected as to what I mentioned as far as limits, that was where my, was concerned with. So, I, I personally, I know there's gonna be hiccups along the way, it's a new process that the staff's trying to learn, you're trying to manage, and we're trying to understand before we all follow this together, so, um, nothing's a hundred percent foolproof, there'll be hiccups on, along the way, so it'll be a learning process for all of us. So, I understand that, uh, you know, uh, like I said, if there's any questions that we have, I've, I've always, you know, drop to your line, what is this, can you give me documentation on this particular item, or identifying what the project is? I understand it's ADA, but, and you've always, you know, been more than happy to give me an answer and, and be prompting your response, so I appreciate that, so. So, gentlemen, any other questions? You, you wanna go through and look at your, reread all this again, Leonard, and then we'll, we need to...
You need mine?
Yeah, no, that'd be fine, I think at some point in time.
Cause I read it.
We read it a little different, and I read it somewhat different when I read it.
Four, four times a charm.
So, I, I, yeah, Kate, well, I just look at it this way, hey, we, we haven't had one in all this time, and we sure want to get it as comfortable...
And I'll give it to you, Lacy.
Okay.
As we can, before we move on it. Um, my only comment to you was, if, it would've been nice if we would've had, as a group here, us three, been able to put how we would've liked to see it as it was being developed, and we, and we might've been able to get to this process a little sooner and clear up some of these.
I thought that's what we did in our last big work session with everyone's, I mean, everyone brought me their comments and I compiled them together. I, I didn't bring this...
Right.
From scratch, I, I borrowed a tried and true, tested...
Sure.
Policy, so.
Okay, okay. Well, my thinking is we'll, uh, we'll bring this up, and when we do, you know, I want everybody to get to the point of where we can move on it, and we feel comfortable with it, and, cause it ties hand in hand with everything that we're trying to do, so we do need to, to get this buckled up here, but I want to get the budget process out of the way, that's most impending for us right now, and then move over to this.
You know, I see it tying with the budget, and if we take, take this, if you have time, that we can take the budget and kind of walk through some cases and...
Sure. Um, so do you want this back on the agenda next week or in three weeks?
Next, next week's fine with me.
Next week?
Okay.
That'd be fine. Okay.
Or both.
Yeah.
Put it on the next one.
Six times a charm, yeah. Okay, so now we're up to a discussion, just open items and brainstorming. Um, hello, who wants to go first?
I'm brain dead, I don't have anything to discuss, sorry.
Okay. Leonard?
Uh, nothing right now for this meeting.
Okay, um, I don't have anything either, right off the top. Uh, we've already committed to a date with Nikki Harrison, that was the main thing I wanted to get, uh, set up and approved, and I'll give her a call when I, when I get, uh, when I get home this afternoon and let her know, we've got a time and confirmed date for her, so. Uh, with that, my favorite part of the meeting, I make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're outta here. Thank you.
Thanks, Lacy.
Thank you, Lacy.